All right, thank you, everybody. First order of business, I'd like to take a look at the minutes of our January 3 meeting, see if there are any objections.
I just had one typographical edit, and it is on the second item, following my name. It says the word "and," and it should be "as."
Okay. Any other corrections to the meeting minutes, January 3? Okay. With that being said, subject to that correction, can we get a motion to approve the minutes? Can I get a second? Second by not. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Thank you. Before we get rolling on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to make an announcement. So after the departure of Stephen Varanhorst, we now have a vacancy on the Planning Commission, and we're looking for a new member to join us. And for those of us, for those of you who are in our global listening audience, this is actually being televised and on YouTube. The Planning Commission, what we do is that we make recommendations to the elected officials on land development, subdivision applications, as well as we make recommendations to the zoning hearing board on matters that require variances to our code. Also, as part of our duties, we keep our codes updated and in compliance. That being said, and I may be partial here, but I think being on the Planning Commission is one of the more exciting ways to serve Radnor Township. Not only are we at ground zero for any development that happens in Radnor, but if you do join the Planning Commission, you'd be joining many experts in their respective fields. And even though there is diversity here in terms of expertise, we all share a passion to make Radnor one of the premier communities in Delaware County and eastern Pennsylvania. So if this sounds exciting to you, please contact Peggy Hagan or Bill White. They'll walk you through the process of interviewing and perhaps being appointed. That being said, before we roll into our normal agenda, I'd like to make a call for any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight that we're going to Seeing none, let's begin with application 210941, 104 to 110 North Wayne Avenue. Just magically focus in.
I'm Ken Kearns. I am the owner of the subject property here, and we are proposing a simple subdivision just based on the fact that when we acquired this property two years ago, we purchased it from a estate that had owned it since, believe it or not, 1897, and it had never been divided between the physical addresses. It was one parcel. So we're just proposing to subdivide along the party walls that exist today, just for the simplicity of how the taxes are applied to each tenant in the property, and just to subdivide it for probably been a long time coming, so we figured it would be a simple subdivision. No plans for the property, no interest in developing the property. The proposed lot three and four are both occupied by tenants with 10-year leases. We are negotiating a lease right now for Lot 1, which is the former Wayne Jewelers, and the former Pat's Barber Shop, which is on Lot 2 on the plan here, is currently occupied by a temporary pop-up art exhibit, and we might, we don't really know what the plan is for that particular property. It's only 600 square feet or so. But just a simple subdivision along the existing party walls for the buildings.
Okay. Got it. Are you asking for any waivers?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Mike Rokosny from Site Engineering Concepts. We'd be asking for two waivers. The first would be from Section 255-22B-1K, and that's just showing the existing features within 500 feet of the property. And the second waiver that we'd be requesting would be from Section 255-43-1B, Section 2, and that's for the open space requirement, since we are not proposing any development with these properties.
So with the second waiver, 255-43.1B2, you're also asking for us to waive the fee in lieu?
Correct.
As well? Okay. I understand. So a couple of questions. Has there ever been, to your knowledge, any zoning relief granted? Essentially, what this is, is one property being subdivided into four sections. Has there ever been any zoning relief granted to the subject property that would flow to the individual lots?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Again, we acquired this in 2021, and the family that owned this had, I don't know what they have done along the way, but my guess is, just looking at the title, that they had never really done anything as far as asking for zoning.
Okay. In the deed, or in the title search, excuse me, there's a reference to some sort of a deed restriction?
I'm not aware of it. What it restricts?
Well, it references a book and page. Maybe we can get the solicitor to comment on that?
Yeah, the title search came up with what it quote-unquote said, "Restrictions affecting title as in deed book W-5, page 262." If you can ask, your title company probably has this. If you can just get a copy from them and then forward it to me, I just want to see what's going on here. Most likely, it's nothing, just crossing my T, dotting my I.
Also, the Gilmore letter of January 22nd, it indicated a desire, and perhaps we can have our consultants comment on this, it indicated a desire to relook at maybe obtaining an easement for right-of-way, maybe cartway width for the sidewalk, public parking. Mr. Norsini, do you want to take that on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, we would like to request, if you look at Lancaster Avenue and you see where it says "concrete curb," we would like an easement back to that concrete curb and eastward to North Wayne Avenue, and similarly on North Wayne Avenue, an easement at that concrete curb up to the end of the property, which really just encompasses the parking spaces and the little square there at the corner.
That's fine. We'll go with that.
Commissioners, what comment do you have?
How's the current real estate taxes calculated? Because right now, let's assume that Wayne Jewelers is, still has an active business, but you have, was it Christopher's and, I forget, was it the Blue Elephant, the store next to it? So how's that currently calculated versus in the future, obviously, each lot will get its own unique tax bill?
Yeah, we, right now, it's pro-rata share of the taxes, and we're actually, the partnership's paying Pat's barber shop portion. But yeah, they would just get their own tax bills, is what we're trying to achieve here.
I'm actually just curious, from a business standpoint, why go through all this effort if you have no plans to?
There are four separate addresses. I have the operator of Christopher's and the operator of Blue Elephant are partners in, of mine, in the ownership. So again, just because of what, we're about to lease this jeweler store to a new tenant, and it's just an easier, cleaner pass-through. And it's a, it's a national tenant, so it's a net lease that everything goes right back to the tenant. It just makes it easier.
Understood. Okay. Clearly. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Phillips, any additional comments?
The only other item that was in my letter was general comment number one, which requested some information on the access easement that would be around Lot 4 to access the rear of Lot 3. I guess that's how that goes. Plans weren't completely clear what was going on there and whether they needed an easement to access that or not.
So you just need additional exhibit?
Yes. So the guy that buys Lot 3, right, and for whatever reason, he's got to get to that back there, you got to walk around Lot 4. So there's got to be some sort of an agreement or easement or something that provides for that, and then that would be put in the deeds.
Yeah. Yeah, we've talked about that. That's fine.
So essentially, you're requesting that we make the subject to an easement for Lot 3?
Yes.
Are you specifying from which lot you'd be getting it, or does it matter?
It would be coming from Lot 4, I would imagine, because that's the one that they would have to cross to get to Lot 3.
That would make, that would be the clearest way to do it, sure.
That hatched area is also a proposed access easement on the plan, going around Lot 4 to Lot 3.
Got it. Okay. So it's already contemplated. Okay. All right. So here's what, let me see if I have that all captured here. So the township is requesting easements for parking and the control device. We want to clarify the deed restriction that's currently placed on, potentially placed on the lot, and we want to make sure that the, there is an easement for access to Lot 3 from Lot 4. Did I capture all of the conditions? And you're seeking waivers for item number 2, Code 255-22B1K and 255-43.1.B2.
Correct.
Okay. So just for the record, commissioners, the second waiver that is being requested by the applicant is essentially a waiver. It's a fee in lieu of $3,307 that they would be asking for us to forego. Okay. All right.
Excuse me. Can I ask one question? What is the deed restriction for, again?
We don't know.
Oh, okay. Got it, got it. Heard the title.
All right. So let me frame this into a motion, and, yes, thank you. Any public comment? Please come up, state your name. Good evening. And where do you live?
Midland Avenue.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I wonder about this little tooth that comes out of Lot 1. What's supposed to happen there? I mean, is that part of the Jewelers right now? This little, this little square that comes out the side?
Is here?
Yes. No, 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 no. No, 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 no. I know that.
Mr. Kearns, could you just step to the mic?
So this area here is the part of the Wayne Jewelers currently. It is a workshop.
Okay, right. Now, stay close, stay close. So you're going to leave this spot be tiny like Pat's is?
Pat's will be a separate parcel, yes.
Lot 2 will be a separate parcel where Pat's used to be?
Correct.
But now it's in a gallery. Okay. So what is the little, what is this area right here?
So there, there's an existing concrete alley here between the jeweler and Pat's that has a fence in this location where they service the trash from the back of the jeweler.
You tend to walk by it and not notice it?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay. I just wondered, I didn't realize that there was another piece of the Jewelers over there. So this is going to stay a little tiny spot?
There's no, there's no development. We're going to lease this to a new tenant.
Right, I understand that.
And it's existing structure.
Yes, it is. And that, there's no real purpose for separating Lot 2 off? It was always Lot 2 was separated, or not?
These are all, these are all separate addresses right now?
Right.
They're just one tax parcel.
Right, right. And you're doing this for the benefit of the tax parcel?
To separate the taxes between the tenants. Correct.
All righty. I just didn't understand what was going on right there, because I walk by it all the time, not sure. Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
Any additional public comment? Okay. I do have a quick question, and this is really directed towards the commissioners, as well as the applicant. I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable about the fee-in-lie waiver, because it does, it doesn't create any additional, it doesn't create revenue for the township, and, you know, the amount is not significant, but I think there is an opportunity here for the township to benefit.
I would, I would just want to know what is our standard behavior with fee-in-lie? In other words, are we consistent? And if we are consistent, we should continue to be, no matter what the number is. But if we're not consistent, and the number is low, then maybe, is it that important?
So the argument, so there's two arguments here. Number one is that this exists for a reason in our code, but this is not the traditional land development that, that we would assess a fee in lieu on. My tenure on the Planning Commission is relatively short, so I want to rely on other commissioners as well as perhaps our consultants to determine if this is an appropriate action to grant the waiver.
I'm the oldest or longest-tenured member on the commission. I was on the commission when this was adopted. This continues to be a quandary for me to comment, though, because Site Engineering and I are doing work in King of Prussia, and I don't know if commenting on the history is something I can do without a conflict of interest. But the history stands for itself. The history, it was always contemplated. You can tell me to stop, Peter, if I'm...
No, keep going. You're good.
I think it was always contemplated for actual new development. It was never contemplated, we've had all sorts of subdivisions, and you've never seen the issue pop up. I think it's actually being proactive on the applicant to bring it up.
My comment would be, and I agree with what you're saying, because if you are going to be asking the developer to pay a fee to perform this for new development, you're creating revenue, future revenue. For here, you're not. This is just an administrative task that the owner's asking us to do, so I see a difference.
I think that if they decide to make it all, or combine Pat's with Wayne Jewelers, then maybe in that circumstance, you might want to look at whether or not the fee is applicable. But just subdivision of existing uses and no change, to me, was not contemplated by this ordinance when we enacted it years ago.
Any other comments?
I just would say that I'm persuaded by the two commissioners who just spoke to allow for this waiver.
Okay. I mean, I'm not seeing a lot of objection, or I think we can proceed. So I'm going to craft a motion, best I can. So first, the motion is to approve application 210941, 104 to 110 North Wayne Avenue, granting the two waivers, first one being 255-22.B1K, as well as the waiver for 255-43.1B2, and subject to easements for parking and our traffic control device granted in favor of Radnor Township, clarification of the deed restriction mentioned in the title report, as well as an easement for proposed Lot 3 granted by Lot 4. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Second by not. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So unanimous with Commissioner Kunda abstaining. Thank you. Good luck. Second item of the evening, application 210985, 739 Darby Paoli Road.
Heather Gill, and with me tonight, I have Joe Gracie, President of Franklin Engineering, and I have the property owner, John Littredello. We are here tonight to seek a recommendation for an amended lot line plan. John currently owns both properties. One of the properties is a landlocked property, which is not ideal. He is amending the lot line between the two properties so that it is no longer a landlocked property. There's no land development proposed. It's just merely amending the common property line between two properties that he owns. We have two review letters, one from Gannett Fleming, and we have one from Gilmore and Associates. One of the comments, if we want to go down just a couple, there's only a few. The title report was submitted, and it was emailed, and a hard copy was provided to the township. We've updated the plans already to show steep slope on the property. We are going to ask for a waiver from the third comment, Section 255-22B1K, to provide a survey within 500 feet of the property. And I think the last comment, which was also a comment on the Gilmore and Associates letter, was to obtain the existing right-of-way width for Colony Road, which we have on our plans as 60 feet. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Could we, there's a second plan here that shows the features, including the pond. So it appears that you're bisecting the pond with this lot line change? It's actually not this plan. There's another one.
I can show you what was initially submitted. It's very similar.
Yep.
Yep.
There it is.
So this is the, this is the original. This is the existing features.
Mm-hmm.
And then the first plan shows the amended lot line.
Okay. So is the amendment lot line going through the pond?
I think it goes here.
A little bit along the edge of the pond, but the pond, there's two ponds on the property, and the pond kind of dissipates into a channel area.
Okay.
Yeah, sir, this up here, it says pond, but it's really more of a stream. It's probably six inches deep or something. It looks wide there, but that's, you know, that's more the pond area. So this area there is more, you know, more of a stream.
Mr. Norsini, do you have any thoughts?
So actually, when you had that overlaid, I could see the proposed lot line. I don't know if they were perfectly lined up, but one of the questions we had was, if that lot line does go through the pond proper, then perhaps there should be some agreement that one party is responsible for the entire pond, or it's split between the two parties. That way, if something goes amiss, whether it has to be dredged, or there's, you know, it has to be treated for weeds on the top, and that would go through our solicitor.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. That's a good idea, yeah.
Commissioners, any thoughts? Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Drummond?
It seems like they answered our questions or will comply, and I have nothing else.
Sure. So with respect to the pond, if we were to make a recommendation, how would you construct that in a motion?
A recommendation that a shared easement, shared operation and maintenance agreement concerning the pond be prepared for the township solicitor's review and approval.
Okay.
Because one other thing, if the second lot is ever sold and developed with a house, more likely than not, the stormwater from that house is going to be released eventually into that pond, and so you're going to want, we're going to need language there to allow that to happen also.
Okay. Let's hear from the public. All right. Seeing none. So I'd like to make a motion granting approval to application 210985, 739 Darby Paoli Road, subject to the Gannett Fleming letter of January 23, 2024, as well as the Gilmore letter of January 22, 2024, with the waiver of Code Chapter 255-22B1K, and also subject to an operation and maintenance agreement reviewed by the township solicitor with respect to the pond.
And one question on that. You know, we use the term pond, but there's also sort of a creek that abuts it. I don't know if there's a definition of what a pond is versus a creek. I don't know if that matters for the language.
Just, it's, we call it a water body.
Water body.
I just think, if, you know, there is definitely a dam, at least on the plan, there's a dam that says it seems like it's created by. I just, you know, looking ahead, even though this is more of a, going to be a neighbor, neighbor issue than a township issue, other than the stormwater, usually when neighbors have problems over a shared feature like this, the first place they come to is us. So we like to recommend some sort of, something in writing, so if, you know, anyone in the future, the two neighbors are going to understand what their, you know, obligations are, what they can and cannot do, and you don't get people complaining, you know, what happens if the one guy takes the dam out and the whole pond goes away, and the other one's complaining, "You took away my pond." That's what I'm more concerned with.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So that being said, I'd like to make the motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Vines. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Before we get to our new business, and so Commissioner Golis is kind enough to be on tonight's agenda for transit-oriented development. for transit-oriented development. I did, before we lead into it, I did want to refocus, um, us as a planning commission on our duties tonight. And this, our duties are provided for in our governing document, which is, uh, the municipal planning code, or the MPC. Particularly, um, section two-zero-nine dot one, which covers the powers and duties of the planning commission. And under paragraph B, it allows us, amongst other things, uh, to prepare, and I'm quoting directly from the document, "To prepare and present to the Board of Commissioners a zoning ordinance and make recommendations on proposed zoning ordinance amendments." We're not doing that this evening, because the caveat, of course, is that we can only do this at the request of the governing body, which is our Board of Commissioners. And the municipal code, uh, the municipal planning code, um, really makes that very clear. So what you're about to hear, uh, and learn about is really a presentation that's designed to spur dialogue. It's designed to, uh, have some discussion around the topic of transit-oriented development. We're going to listen. We're going to learn. And Commissioner Golis will speak to us. However, at the end of the presentation, we are not going to take any official action. The official action, uh, can only be taken at the request of our governing officials. So that's our Board of Commissioners. So, if there is any interest at the conclusion of the presentation, uh, from the BOC to pursue this further, we will be able to take this on with their authorization. So with that being said, Commissioner Golis, sorry for the long lead, and the floor is yours. Perfectly all right.
Like, so, is the mic on? Yeah, okay. So, I've been, uh, I've been waiting seven years to make this presentation. In my first year on planning, I... Am I not picked, the mic's not being picked up? Anyway.
Is there a handheld that you would be more comfortable with?
No, I'm okay. Just wave at me if I go away.
Maybe you're too tall for our facilities.
Yeah. It's always something, right? So, anyway, um, it was twenty-seventeen and, uh, transit-oriented development and, was sort of catching on a little bit. When our comprehensive plan was done in two thousand and three, transit-oriented development was, I don't think people really had their arms around it very much. It was out there, but, um, it really came, as a matter of fact, in our comprehensive plan that's in, in play today, the one transit-oriented development zone, which is R six, uh, did not exist. So our present comprehensive plan doesn't, uh, the only mention of transit-oriented design is in the zoning designation, R six. But anyway, um, transit-oriented design is, uh, it's a concept that I think, uh, Radnor fits, uh, together with pretty well. I'll start parsing through this here. So this is, uh, this was created by the Delaware Valley, uh, by the Delaware, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission in two thousand and fourteen and updated like three years ago. And what this shows is, uh, transit-oriented design ordinances and transit-oriented design plans, basically in the nine counties. Radnor's right in the middle. As you can see, Radnor doesn't have either a ordinance or ongoing plans around transit-oriented design. I mean, what it's, um, and it's interesting because the... What the R six zoning, uh, code calls for about transit-oriented design is that should be located within one-quarter mile of public mass transit opportunity, shall have frontage on an arterial cartway, shall be located in proximity to similar uses and densities, shall be located within one-half mile of a business district, as defined in the two thousand and three comprehensive plan, shall be subject to land development approval and submission of a transportation impact study, shall have a minimum lot size of not less than two acres. And you probably all know that transit-oriented design is, uh, the concept itself is, uh, developing something in a community development that includes a mixture of housing, office, retail, and other amenities, integrated into a walkable neighborhood and located within a half mile of quality public transportation. So as you see here, we're sort of the hole in the donut in terms of, like, what's going on around these concepts and this type of planning. And we have a lot of amenities that would enable a good transit-oriented plan. So the darker, the bigger darker, uh, circles are where there's strong existing, strong existing orientation and strong future potential for transit-oriented development. And as you can see, Radnor is sort of the dog and the tails on the dog. The smaller light blue boxes are involved, future potential for transit-oriented design. So, given, I think, given the fact that we, we have sort of a, a setup, a pretty good setup for TOD, I think it, it might be a reason to, to look more fully into this. Just following what MJ said, though, I, this presentation, to me, is just a starting point for a few, for a possible future discussion about TOD. This presentation doesn't draw any conclusions. I think deeper actionable planning, uh, should come later if that direction is deemed appropriate by the powers that be. So, uh, to me, this is about making the planning commission a little smarter about transit-oriented development. And I just basically did a reporting job. So I went to, went through our code. I went to documents by the DVR PC, different other, different agencies, looked at what other townships have done. And I just put, it's basically a report about that. So it's like, it's a snapshot of what TOD is about in our region. This graphic shows you the rail lines. So we, we capture, we capture a lot of action, especially in the planned laboratory office zoning areas, which comprise, you know, Penn Med and, so there's a lot of things that you couldn't, if you didn't have this infrastructure, you wouldn't be, I don't think you'd be a good candidate for TOD. Here's, if you, if you see the brown, that is R, that's the only R six in Radnor. And that's basically at the St. David's train station. So, the document I sent you guys, uh, I was a little bit wrong. So, I think I said four properties were TOD designated. What I left out, because I didn't know, was, um, the Iron Works Way condos are also in this TOD. So, um, what struck me, though, was Sixty West, right? So Sixty West has no reference in their application to transit-oriented development, nothing. But Sixty West is a model for TOD. Everything TOD wants, Sixty West has. But people, for some reason, I, if I was the applicant, I would be like, hey, we're, we can be transit-oriented development. It, it seems like a plus, but for some reason, Radnor hasn't pushed it. And, and when I look at, like, when I, if you look at the brown, it's surrounded by R, but that's R six, which is designated TOD. But around it is very similar apartments, condos, and that's all R five. And so my question would be to our zoning officer, would be how, explain why R, R six is segregated to St. David's. Because I think there's, if you look at Ra, if you look at the Pike, there's a, there's a lot of other places that could be R six, I think. This is from DRP, DRV PC. So, the completed project is, uh, I thought that was Radnor family practice across from the food, uh, across from the, uh, farmer's market. That's, I don't think that's it. I think this is called Nine Point or North Point or, but this is not a TOD. So this is just, this is in C two. So, the DVR PC looks at this and they, you know, and they give it, they give you, they give you the impression that Radnor has some TOD outside of the St. David's train station area, but that's not true. So this, this might be, this is another, uh, tough thing. This is a KOP rail extension, which is dead. It's not going to happen. I think a lot of people, I mean, fellow Commissioner Kunda would, would, I mean, he, he has a lot at stake in King of Prussia. He understood how this would have been very successful in moving people in the service industry on mass transit to King of Prussia and from the city or from wherever. But they, SEPTA is, Ryder ships way down, cut in half. They, they're going to put all their money in a Roosevelt Boulevard rail line if that ever happens. And so this, this will never happen. And did this deescalate? Did this failure deescalate sort of the push for TOD in Radnor? I don't know. So these are the, these are the, uh, R six buildings. This is my mistake. I don't think this is what I was referencing. Radnor, you know, parking, parking and, uh, well, parking in general in the WBOD, the downtown in Wayne, isn't, is a huge issue. And could something be done around a TOD concept in a parking lot like this where you, you had a parking, you know, a vertical four-story, five-story parking lot? It's just an idea. This is the, the west, Sixty West, uh, which, which is, uh, you know, looking at their plans and just thinking about TOD, I was like, that, it's a perfect, perfect spot for it. And that's pretty much it, except, um, I think the big question, one of the big questions going forward, if we, if this commission and the board decides to, given the sea change in how we live and work right now, my question would be, will, will transit-oriented development projects regain their previous appeal? Or where do they stand? Where is, where are the experts on TOD, given what we just went through? In terms of this big change in how we live and work and commute? The other question is, is Radnor willing to consider the elimination of parking minimum requirements in the downtown? And the reason I bring that up is, if those things, those minimums fly in the face of transit-oriented design. So, if, you can't do transit-oriented design if you have a lot of minimum parking requirements. And I think those, the minimum parking also, it fights with mixed use. And it, it sort of makes driving the only viable form of transportation. It sort of builds, you have to have two cars into the equation. And I think Sixty West is an example of something that, do they need as many parking spaces as they're, they're calling for? So that's pretty much what I got, and I know it's probably, it's pretty thin, but it's, maybe it's stuff you guys weren't, like, totally aware of. I wasn't aware of some of it. And my feeling would be that if you guys, if the commission wants more work on this or deeper, a deeper dive, and if the Board of Commissioners want that, I'd, you know, I'd be happy to help, continue or be part of it, so.
This is a great presentation. Thank you. Very thought-provoking. One, one question, maybe it's premature, but with what you're proposing, shouldn't density also be a part of the conversation as well? Because of your proposing, obviously from a, just from a practical standpoint, some of the properties that you laid out and as well as the new future development, why not basically allow the developer in lieu of the parking, basically get the scale that they're going to need in order to make it economically viable?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I, 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 there are, there are many references by the DVR PC about density being part, being fundamentally part of a successful TOD project. It, it doesn't work if it's not dense, so.
Correct. Because one is going to feed in the other, obviously, the retail associated, uh, that's going to be physically located adjacent to this area.
That's right.
More viability.
And, and we're seeing, like, some of the projects we're seeing are, you know, they're, uh, they're calling, they're calling for, I mean, density's part of, you know, the, the, uh, the project that's next to the village, uh, on Lancaster, the, the, I think, you know, the forty, what is it, forty-nine townhomes? So, um, yeah, no, I, that's totally legit.
Commissioner Golis, thank you for bringing this topic forward. I, I suppose we're going to roll into some Q and A. Would you like to do that there, or would you like to come back to the dais?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I have a few questions. It, it's entirely up to you.
No, no, I'll come back.
Okay.
Uh, no, maybe it's better to do it this way.
Yeah.
Because I can see all the faces, huh?
It, it's your choice. Thank you.
I'll stay here.
I know you gave this definition, but, um, just tell us a little bit about the intention of transit-oriented design. What is it intended, what problem is it intended to solve?
Well, I think congestion of, of highways, the immense amount of, you know, private cars on the, on the roads. You know, it, it, in some ways, it makes, it creates, uh, layers of affordable housing that just come with it, because it's a way in that way. It just happens. Some of that has to be, you know, what people want to, though. Like, you know, so Radnor's, we're not, we're not, you can't cookie cutter that. But I think it's just walkability. It's just like using public transportation instead of, like, I, I don't understand, I mean, I worked in the city. When I did, when I needed a car, when I was in newspapers, I couldn't use public transportation, because I was at different bureaus all day long. But once I was in one place, we have a, you know, we have a gem here of a, of a transportation system. It's, it's like, it's like no other. I mean, if you're out west in Dallas, or you don't, you don't even know of such a thing. So, yeah, I mean, it just, um, yeah, I don't, uh, so I think it's a, it's a how you live. It's a solution to some of the problems that we face. It's a solution to some of the problems that we face because of the world we live in with pollution, carbon in the air, like, it's just, it's a more, I think it's a more sustainable way to, to live and work.
So is it fair then to say that the intention is really, you increase density? And of course, there's a cost to that, societal cost to that. But the idea is that with additional density, you will have fewer cars on the road because folks would be more encouraged to take public transportation, is that?
Well, if you could walk to Sep, the Wayne Station from 60 West, why, and you, you're going downtown, why would you take a car?
Utilization would increase. Okay, that's fair. So in the context of Philadelphia, right, the, the greater Philadelphia region, and this is probably not unique. Our transportation system is really designed to bring folks into the city from the suburbs. Is that fair?
Not, but if you're downtown, it's designed to get you around downtown. So there's a lot of buses, there's, there's the Market L, there's, there's lots of ways to, lots of ways to internally commute in Philly.
Sure. But let's say I lived in Radnor and I wanted to go to Wayne. Do you believe that our current transportation system is designed for that?
Uh, I don't, I'm not sure I follow.
So if I live in a different part of town, in Radnor township, and I wanted to do my shopping in the WBOD, let's say, would, are folks making the commute that way or would anything change?
Well, yeah, I mean, so if I take my car to Ardmore for service, I never get picked up. I just hop back on R five and, and it's a 10 minute walk to my house from the station, so. And I think a lot of people have that experience. They just probably don't use it. They don't, they don't think about it that way. They're like, I'm trained not to get on that train. And so, but the more development, the more development, the more R five or R six, I think the more people are going to have that experience of at least trying it out.
So what has happened, and maybe this is a question for Commissioner Kim, as well as Commissioner, you, Commissioner Golis. What has happened to TOD post pandemic?
I think the, from what I understand, there's been a shift, you know? There's been a shift from the energy from central business districts to suburban job centers and town centers. I was actually going to ask this, that I think it's time to start thinking of TODs, not just like, it's kind of hub and spoke model where you have these suburban towns and feed into a central city, but perhaps models where towns are connected to each other or maybe even people from this inner city and center city can actually go enjoy a night out in downtown Wayne, for example, and have it that way. So it's not necessarily, I think the conversation is actually broader now. It's not just density and residential and affordable housing, which are all really important and very near to me, dear to me, but also I think issues of, you know, economic revitalization, place making, these types of things are also really important to consider in TOD developments in townships like, like Radnor, so.
So interestingly enough, there's a couple of projects that are either, were in the pipeline and now considered to be on hold or not on hold. You brought up one, which was the King of Prussia Light Rail that really addresses the need for suburban to suburban transfers. As well as, I believe there was a metro project that instead of funneling travelers to center city was more circular in nature. So the other thing, so I'm, I'm just wondering if we have the infrastructure to support TOD within the context of, number one, post pandemic, where the travel patterns have changed? And also with the fact that there's really nothing, very little in terms of a feeder from suburb to suburb?
Although I will say that when I had trouble getting downtown on regional rail, I would go to Upper, I would go to Upper Darby, get on the market, you know, market line. And so there is a lot of workaround in terms of suburb to suburb, I think, in already existing. I think we have a big system that people, they're not aware of because they're going there.
I think that, sure. I think that that's a unique feature of Delaware County where there's lots of rail options. The other thing, you mentioned several developments in town that are TOD friendly, R six code. And yet, none of the developments you mentioned, with the exception of 60 West, are really mixed use. Do you find that odd?
Well, 60 West is hardly heavy mixed use.
That's true, but, but it, it is the only one that happens to be mixed use. And I, I don't recall whether it's 1400 or 1700 square feet of retail.
I would just, Iron Works, that property maybe proper is not mixed use. But if you look at the totality of that property, it includes Land Rover, the VA, not the VA, but the, VFW, that I think that if you look at, and then, and then you look at the shopping center, you know, the food quarter, shopping center next to it, that that's kind of a mixed use if you look at it at a larger scale.
Yeah, and that, and those zoning designations are different, you know, for all of that. That's not R six. The R six is just like basically seven properties. And surrounded by R five, that looks the same. So my, that's my question. My question would be like, how did this happen? And who, like who, whose idea was this? Because why are we, why don't we have more R six? Because if it walks and talks and looks the same.
Now, is, is there market demand for the kind of development that you speak of?
Although the, by the middle school, that development, that's going to take some shops out and put residents above mixed use shops, that's perfect for TOD. That, that's an R six, and it's not. It's C three or something, I, I forget what it is, but it's, so we should change the zoning and when we create TOD, right?
Matt, do you think it would be better to do equivalent of an overlay approach? So you already have certain districts carved out. Like the, the big example is the WBOD. You could use that as your boundary area and drop a TOD language in on top of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it's like, I don't think there's an answer for that. I mean, I don't disagree. I, I think that's part of the problem with this, this subject.
You mean, I'm the choir and you're the church or?
Matt, let me just ask, you were just referencing the development going on near the middle school?
Yeah.
Are you saying that those persons, you know, could have developed a property without parking?
Yeah.
So for example?
Well, no, no, with one car.
I'm just saying.
I mean, our minimums.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of, you know, was listening to what, what Commissioner Fruman was saying as to the, the type of community that we live in. Just to go to the grocery store, to go to other things that just aren't on the, you know, at the next train stop. I just don't know that that fits with a suburban area that we live in as opposed to a center city, which is connected with a, with rail, with, you know, people that take the buses, you know, for a couple of blocks and have everything right next to them. It's, I don't see how having the SEPTA system that takes people, and I've used SEPTA, I use it every week, to go into the city, not as much as I used to. But whenever I do go in, I take the rail. Then again, I have to drive to get to the rail to take the rail. I just don't know that we're going to be in a position where you're not going to have a car, you know, to go to King of Prussia, to go to Costco, to go, you know, to virtually everything other than center city.
I, I, I think that's all legit. I mean, it's, I mean, we're talking about something that I, I think people, they don't, I don't think they understand the implications completely of transit oriented development.
But, but there are communities around here that are being developed. The problem, lame with what, I think with what you're talking about, is that we don't have the space to really start from scratch. So if you take a look at the development, the old Valley Forge Golf Course, where you have the Wegmans and whatever, it's a perfect community with what you're talking about, with the exception of rail. The folks that live in those residential apartment complexes, they have the ability just to walk around. So do you need to basically use rail to go from one town to the other? I would make the argument, you may, but going to your point about if I need to go shopping and I don't have a Wegmans or an Acme or whatever, or a Giant right behind me, I'm going to have to drive to go across the town. But if you have the density and you have a associated retail around that where it is walkable, like the Wegmans in King of Prussia, or making the argument along the same line of, with what Equus is doing on Newtown Square on Route three and 252. They're creating some, one of a small little type of walkable community that a lot of people opt to because they don't want to drive. They rather walk around and they opt to drive to go to Costco either every once a month or they need to go across town, they'll drive the car, but to do the, the daily stuff, walk.
No, that's, that's legit. I, I just think that without a transit component, you, you're not, TOD is never going to work. It, it, it's, using public transit is the driver for TOD. So my, my, my argument back would be like, if you live in those condos above the shops across from the middle school, you get the, you get the right people to live in there. The people that are, they don't mind walking the three minutes or 10 minutes to the train station and then lugging stuff around on the train.
Yeah. I, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Vine's comment about parking. I, I completely understand that those are parameters that we deal with today. But the buildings that we built have a lifespan of 50, 75, 100 years. I mean, we're looking at some buildings that's been around for a century. I, I look back to 10 years ago, you know, who would have imagined that we could get our groceries delivered? That we would have these types of micro mobility options that people have today? So can you just imagine 50 years from now, what the environment would be like? I think if we shortchange ourselves by parking our urban environment, over parking our environment, thinking we need to serve people's needs today, we would be actually discounting or disadvantaging future generations to benefit from perhaps more housing, more open space, more place making features. So I think, I think, I think in that sense TOD has the right sort of concept to set us up for the future. I also wanted to use this opportunity while I'm still speaking. DVRPC actually has grant funding applications open right now. So I think this is very timely for Pennsylvania communities, just like us, to apply for up to $100,000 of TOD related studies, if you like to apply for. And I highly recommend that the Board of Commissioners actually instruct the staff here to do that, so.
Thank you. I do have a follow up here, and this is a question, I think, for Commissioner Kim and Commissioner Golis as well. Is the real enemy here, the fact that our current codes stipulate that we place parking requirements? Essentially, we, we're forcing developers to provide for the storage of cars rather than creating mixed use spaces, including in the WBOD, which is really a prime, a prime zoning area for this kind of development. So as an example, 150 to 168 Lancaster, there's a reason why there's 24 one bedroom units and four two bedroom units, because each two bedroom unit requires space for two cars, right? So would, would that mix change if we said one per? Is that what you're driving at?
Yeah, I mean, so when Philadelphia redid its zoning code, they built transit oriented design into a lot of stuff, the planning commission. And it just got pushed down because they wanted to eliminate required parking that, in, in those TODs. So it just went down. They did, the city, uh, city council just said, no, we're not accepting this, we're not. So that, all that zoning work was watered down that way. So I think, yeah, I mean, you can't, can you have it both ways? I mean, that'd be my question. Why would you have a transit oriented design concept where you parked a ton of cars? It's, it's sort of why? Like, don't do it, just don't do the TOD. If that's, I don't know, maybe that's the answer. I don't have any answers. Like, I just, it just seems to me that Radnor set up better than many places for a transit oriented design concept, at least to be studied, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. And MJ, I, I think the economics here actually work. And so I've been on the private sector side, serving private sector developer clients, and they totally do the math that way. They look at the code and they say, all right, how hard is it going to be for me to fight this planning commission or this township to get more parking or less parking in here? So therefore, I think the easiest path forward is 80% one bedrooms and 20% two bedrooms because that's all I can park, really. But really, the housing need here may be the opposite, maybe 80% two bedrooms. Cause we have seniors who are co-living, or we have maybe small families that need housing. They can't afford a single family home here. And unfortunately, the economics work either way here in Radnor. I think developers can make a profit regardless of what they do. In other places, that's not the case. And so that really hampers it. I think while we have that luxury, I think we should explore different options.
So my concern is that rather than using what we already have, and I think the big poster child for mixed use is WBOD, right? I, I think that's really clear. But rather than expand WD type development into other neighborhoods, I think we should take a look at parking minimums in the WBOD and see if it's still appropriate to park as many cars at, let's say, 60 West. Would 60 West look different if the parking minimums were different, right? And, and see if that works. But to all of, to Commissioner Kim's point and Commissioner Golis's point, I'm not sure TOD works without the T, without the transportation. I'm looking over my shoulder here into Mr. Vine's laptop, and he's looking at the King of Prussia development, Town Center. And I guarantee you, there's tons of cars parked at those properties. And they're using cars, which is why they have a traffic problem today. Even though everything is in theory accessible, so you have accessible shopping and you have delivery as well. So.
Can I ask you a question? What is in the design that we're talking about here, other than just parking? I mean, what, what is it to this, other than parking? Cause otherwise, the market's going to drive that. I mean, to your point about the, the facilities, if developers aren't going to build something with no parking, if nobody's going to buy it because they can't park their car?
Well, right now, there's no choice. In other words, we have parking minimums and you sort of get what you get.
No, but there's got to be more to it to make a livable, walkable community than just eliminating parking. just eliminating parking. I mean, what are the other elements we're talking about in design?
So, Radnor, in their one TOD, they say a quarter mile to good, adequate transportation, like rail transportation. So, a quarter mile, right? So, that's right there at St. David's Station, so it's not even close. A lot of other municipalities say a half mile. So, is everyone going to walk a half mile?
But walk a half mile to what?
To transit.
But it takes you to center city?
Not all of it. You could go the other way, you could go to Westchester.
Okay, but I mean, it can only take you to...
But you still can't get to Giant or Acme.
It only takes you to where it takes you, and then, you know, what you're looking for is not necessarily anywhere near a train station.
Right, but it's just sort of the rules, right, for TOD. They require, it's, to be a TOD, to be, to be considered that, you have to be walkable to transit. I'm not making an argument that we do it right or anything, but there's other stuff, though. You have to have a retail in your building, you know, it's mixed use is required, and sort of this whole, it's, it's a mindset, too. It's like, oh, everybody's better off walking. So, I mean, when you read this TOD literature, it's like, it's loaded with sort of, "Don't get in your car anymore." So, Radnor's, Radnor's going to be a tough sell on that.
Yeah, I think it's a focus on the public realm, in addition to the elimination of parking, the reduction of parking, and towards that, it's activation of ground floor, retail, if it's not retail, some kind of non-residential use.
It's also generational things, what, because people that were certainly, that were born in suburbia, they're used to driving versus younger people that are thinking about it differently. So, I would, my thought is going back from a practical standpoint, that in order to agree with what you're talking about, transportation aside, if you have the density, you have associated retail, and you have the ability to create a village where you can easily, and this is happening in other major cities throughout the world itself, all over Brazil, because of all the congestion, no one wants to drive. So, people want to be able to work, live, and shop, probably within like a two, three-block area. And so, if you're able to kind of create this downtown lane where you don't have to drive, you can walk, you can walk to a Giant or whatever, and then, yeah, you get into your car, you may have a car, and you may have to park a few blocks away or whatever, but if you have the density, it will come. And that's, I think that's part, that's what's...
And also, what you're talking about, David, when you have that, you don't have empty shops. And Rad, you know, we have a problem.
Oh, no, this is, I mean, this is like, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. This is sort of like master planning 101, you're trying to create, that's the reason why with, with, what was it, Town Plaza where the Wegmans is at that they're referred to. Some people will argue it was a disaster with all the traffic, I would still make it, I still think it was a very successful project, but you had a huge, open piece of property that was developed over five years or whatever, or, you know, it's still being developed out, but I think that's very successful because you had mass to start with.
So, is this what we're talking about? Because my objective is to make this somewhat digestible, so that it becomes actionable. Does this look like WBOD with fewer parking requirements?
I mean...
And if the answer is no, then we need to dive a little bit deeper.
Well, I question, like, I mean, the retail, there's plenty of restaurants and there's plenty of like, sort of upscale retail, but there's not a grocery store in downtown Lee. You know, that's the more sort of livable type of, I mean, that's the problem they have in cities about people getting to grocery stores, you know, and the prevalence of them. The area that actually fits most of those things is right around the Radnor Financial Center and the, in St. David's there, because the high school's there, there's the, there's a, at least a stop from the trolley there, there's, you know, everything is in that area that you're talking about, and you already have some, some debt, there's apartments, because I see people walking over to the Giant from those apartments. I live near the place in Newtown Square, nobody walks there. I mean, it, they built, I don't know how many homes, like, right there, but nobody walks over there. You know, that's all just car traffic, and it's a zoo in and of itself. It's also cut off, you can't walk to it.
No, but I was referring to people actually live in those apartment buildings.
Right.
There, they go shopping at Whole Foods.
You know, talking about the R6 zoning, used to be in Acme where the Chipotle is, on that side of the street, too, so to speak, so you also have that, no fear of crossing Lancaster eliminated, but we don't have it.
I don't think we...
Grocery stores are too big, basically.
I'd just like to say, I didn't do this tonight with, I didn't think I was going to leave the mic here and have, I didn't see this going anywhere tonight. When I came into this, I didn't see it. I just wanted the planning commission to be a little smarter than they were before tonight about TOD, because it's going to come in the comprehensive plan. Now, the comprehensive plan will not have one actionable thing in it. It'll just say, "We should have TOD, we should have walkable communities, we should..." No, no, no. They have to say, like, "Well, how are we going to have that stuff?" That has to be in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as you say all the time, isn't the answer. The answer is a board, who we answer to. And so, if they say, if the Board of Commissioners goes, "Well, we don't know much about TOD, I think the planning commission should look into it," our old, our old answer would be, "No, you're, we're not kicking that can down the lane for you, you do it." But in this case, maybe we should, like, ask for a grant, maybe we should be proactive, maybe we should go to the board and just say, "Come on, let us apply, see what, where it lands," because there's all, everything that's being said tonight is valid.
So, firstly, I will be the last person to hide behind either the prior version or the upcoming version of the comprehensive land use plan. That being said, I also prefaced your presentation by saying that we will take no action, and we will stay true to that word. However, as, as we think of next steps, because nothing exists in a vacuum, your presentation is valid, we appreciate it, we appreciate learning more about it, and it's great food for thought for our elected officials, for sure. As we begin thinking about it, my mind goes to what's actionable and what's the easiest way to digest this elephant called TOD, and there's detractors. This isn't, this isn't all positive news. Density does put pressure on our existing facilities. Let's, let's face it, people will still drive cars, especially in the transportation environment that we have here today, and of course, our sewer capacity is greatly strained here, to the point where any development needs to reserve space, and sometimes we need to upgrade it, the facilities, at great expense. So, nothing is for free, but at least we can, we can start thinking about it.
Not to mention the schools.
Sure, but within the context of, are we using our code to require people to store personal property, namely cars, in the quantity that they don't want to, does that increase the cost of doing business in Radnor? For developers, does it increase unaffordability and whatnot? I think those are good questions to ask. Perhaps now's a good time, I see the public wanting to talk, so let's hear from the public.
Sure.
Please come up.
Okay, you know I am already, right? Okay. When did the apartment buildings become R6? I'm sorry, when did the apartment buildings become R6?
There were, there was no R6 in the town in 2003.
No, because somewhere between 2003 and now, the Planning Commission Implementation Committee changed the area of Luella Mansion, the Luella Court, into R6. Yes, it did.
It's not on the map that way.
Well, someone probably used their eraser because it was that way. At any rate.
I would comment that I believe ironworks was one of the driving forces of creating the R6. I don't have the, I don't have the exact documentation, but ironworks got some, some relief by creating...
Because of R6, yeah.
By creating this R6.
Right, well, actually, it was created for the Luella area, but be that as it may. If it didn't make it to your map, I'm sorry, but it was on the map.
It's not my map.
I'm sorry, the map that you consulted. The map that you consulted. It was on the map, somewhere between 2003 and now. God knows what happened in between. So, that's one thing. There's more than one. The R6 area there, really related to transit, obviously, it's right on top of it, and the walkability into town. A lot of the things that you're discussing have a timeline to them in some way, and you can't retrofit everything. But if you lived in the Crestwood Apartments or the Wessex House, you can get to plenty of shopping by crossing the street. Now, the street is Lancaster Avenue, and you walk up the sidewalk and you go into the shopping center. One of the things that transit-oriented development, oriented development fosters is better pathways, the idea that you can, better pedestrian access. So, that needs to be looked at. It was mentioned in the 2003 Comprehensive Plan, Transit-Oriented Development, it was around then. The idea that it can't happen here, it can fit in here, it just has to be shaped appropriately, and that's why we're doing a comprehensive plan. Now, if these things are not addressed in a comprehensive plan, I don't understand why we're doing a comprehensive plan.
Well, we are addressing those things in the comprehensive plan. We have to.
Okay, you have to?
Sure, transportation and land use.
Oh, I know that, believe me, I've been on to comprehensive plan committees, so I know the way it is, each chapter, blah, blah, blah. But I'm saying that if these are not addressed clearly throughout the comprehensive plan, kind of supported through the rest of the comprehensive plan, then it's not going to have the impact that a comprehensive plan should do. It should be taking the big ship that is this township and trying to steer it ever so slowly. I know it takes forever, but you have to do it. And a lot of things have changed since the 1988 plan, and things have happened and things have gotten better. Do not be depressed that maybe it's not happening as quickly as you would want it to, but we do have to embark on things that provide us a way to get through the future. And transit-oriented development is one of these things, but you need the whole package. You need people to be able to walk down the street safely on Lancaster Avenue instead of feeling like you're getting blown away. I mean, there's actually an impact if you're walking there. Those kinds of things have to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, I think. And so, I'd like you to all, and I'm really glad that you brought this up, Matt, because it's something that, we're a perfect community, and in addition to, everybody talks about getting on the train. My kids went to their orthodontist by getting on the train and riding down to Bryn Mawr and going to their orthodontist, you know, that's, that's the way that we live, you know, the way I think of things. But also, there are buses. I mean, I don't know, but there's a bus that goes down Lancaster Avenue, and there's several buses, and they go in different directions. So, that's another thing, we, there's this...
It's 100, and it's always empty.
Yeah, right, exactly, because everybody here has this kind of like, "Ooh, bus." But no, buses are a good thing. Get, you know, if you lived in the city, you would get on a bus with no problem, and you wouldn't think twice about it. It just makes sense to foster those things as well, buses and, and the, whatever the peaking whistle is, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, we need them. And so, I'm just letting you know that I'm glad you presented this, and there are ways to make it work, and we just have to not say, "Oh, this will be great, let's make it seven stories tall with a lot of places in it and have lots of parking." No, you don't need the lots of parking, you don't need it to be really tall, you need it to fit in with the way that the landscape is. If we want to stave our community, we have to keep it in the right shape and a, and a human size, a scale that people can relate to. Nobody wants to walk by a tall building in the suburbs. It's just like, it feels creepy. So, keep things at the right scale, and I think I'm almost done. Thanks.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, do you have any word for us about that meeting we were supposed to have with the consultants on the new comprehensive plan in March?
Sure, sure. So, I'm not going to be able to read the tea leaves, so to speak, but I know that there's a zoning focus group meeting with the consultants that I'll be a part of, I think that happens on February 13th, that's a closed meeting. And then, there'll be another closed meeting of the steering committee on February 20th. So, I anticipate that we will be hearing from FHI Studios probably in March. Don't quote me on it, but that's roughly the timeline. I know that the responses, the citizen responses for the comprehensive plan, they closed on January 28th, although, if you do go to radnor2035.org or com, I believe the, it's still open, so I'm not sure if the responses are still being tabulated, but...
I'm just thinking it's a good time and place to put one more item on the list, and that's transit-oriented development.
Sure, sure. And I think the public has spoken and provided their input, and if, if you look at our existing comprehensive land use plan of, don't misquote me, or don't let me misquote, 2003, I believe, TOD is mentioned. The disconnect, I think, for all of us is not, you know, that it's not there or it doesn't exist, it's that it didn't make it into our ordinances, and that's always the traditional disconnect with comp plans and actually making it actionable. But, that being said, I do want to extend my thanks to Commissioner Golis for speaking to us tonight, educating the body, and hopefully, this will have some legs, not only on the comp plan, but as well as the commissioners, as we, the Board of Commissioners, as we start talking about parking minimums and transit and how to make Radnor even better. So, with that being said, I'm going to call, unless anybody has any other comments, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Still moved.
All right, second by Brew Baker. We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Golis.